Good evening, Commissioners, Mayor.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Bradley.
Lad, you know everything about lighting. We need to figure out something for our bald heads because there's quite a shine coming off of yours or some coming off of mine. I mean, I guess it's a trade-off, right? Either good light in a shine or...
Hey, if I had a bunch of stubble, you know, that would be another issue. So... See, I had an extra little light in front of my camera, but my shine comes from my fluorescent light above me.
Oh, the struggles we have.
It's... it's rough.
Come on, Gordy.
He's waiting till the last minute. There he is.
There's Gordy.
Yep. Greg, do you want to start with our Zoom meeting speech?
I do want to do that. Hi, everyone. I'm City Administrator Greg Elliott. I'd like to address a few things before the mayor requests a roll call. This is a pre-meeting, which is formed from the City Commission to discuss various issues and topics. Much of the meeting, we asked that participants mute themselves, allow the Commissioners to have their discussions, and minimize any background noise that may be disruptive. The opportunity for public comment will be provided at the end of the meeting. Participants will be invited to... invited at that time to unmute and address the Commission if they wish. Talked in the past about Zoom bombing. This where a virtual meeting is interrupted by people who fill the screen with objectionable content or otherwise attempt to disrupt the meeting. If this occurs during our meeting tonight, we will disconnect the meeting and restart after a few minutes. Attendees can reconnect in the same link. We'll also turn over the video of the meeting to law enforcement for investigation. Hope to conduct our meetings free of this sort of interruption, but will temporarily shut the meeting down at this hour. Thank you all for participating. Mayor, I'll turn the meeting over to you to ask for the roll.
Hey, welcome to the Adrian City Commission pre-meeting study session. Roll call, please.
Mayor Heath.
President.
Commissioner Hell.
Present.
Commissioner Roberts.
Present.
Commissioner Watson.
Present.
Commissioner Strayer.
Present.
Commissioner Gauss.
Present.
All Commission members present.
Thank you. I will now turn it over to you, Greg, to begin our discussions.
Thank you, Mayor. First item on the pre-meeting agenda tonight is further discussion about acquisition of new ambulances. And Chief Massengill is here present on that topic.
Yes, thank you. Um, the, the, what, I think it was two meetings ago, um, we had a lengthy discussion about the need for an ambulance and purchasing a third ambulance. And after that meeting, we sat down Administrator Elliott and Matt Tomazowski and Finance Director Owen, we sat down and tried to figure out, you know, is there a way to fund an ambulance? What are some, some ideas of how to do that? Originally, for this budget year, we had budgeted $70,000 in the budget that it was taken out of the motor vehicle, or I'm sorry, the capital expenses when COVID hit, but the money was still budgeted in the, um, oh, the capital...
Motor vehicle.
The motor vehicle pool. So the motor vehicle pool was funded, but it was taken out of the capital expenses for that $70,000 expense. So, um, we talked about that, continuing just to fund it with the, the lease-to-own option, which would be $70,000 over a five-year period. And then at the end of the five-year period, it would be ours to, ours to keep. One thing in the memo I sent out that was attached that I made an error, we would have to pay interest, of course, on that. And the interest I put was $6,000. Um, and that is not accurate. Over the life of the loan, we would actually pay somewhere around $23,000 or $24,000 in interest if we leased it, just getting some, some baseline figures from leasing companies. Um, I tried to figure out where I came up with that $6,000 from, and it looks like I put it into a calculator on a computer, and that would be what our monthly payment would be, not the interest over the, the life of the, of the lease. So, um, so that was one option, was to just continue with the $70,000 lease option for five years. The other option is to use that $70,000 toward the ambulance and the equipment. And there was $324,000 and some change that wasn't budgeted for this year, um, in CARES Act funding that the city received, actually, what, about two weeks ago, I think it was, that wasn't expected, wasn't budgeted for when it came, when it was budget time. So, that's additional funding. And Administrator Elliott brought up that the Commission may be interested in using the $70,000 originally budgeted and adding the, the additional money out of that $324,000 to purchase an ambulance. So, that's why we're here tonight, just to see if there's any interest, or if the Commission wants to move forward with either one of those options.
Just a sort of a hyper-technical point. What we do with the CARES Act money, the CARES Act money has to be spent on COVID-related expenses. And so we, what we're actually doing with that is plugging it in to cover public safety payroll, which has been determined to be an allowable CARES Act expense. But that then frees up the money that we otherwise had budgeted or public 50 payroll. That money then becomes available to be used for other purposes, for the ambulance. Oh, yeah. Following up on what you said, I, I think what we'd like to achieve tonight is A, determine that the Commission is indeed in agreement that we need to acquire another ambulance. And then you don't necessarily absolutely have to decide how we'll finance it. I think what we've attempted to present is that there are two ways we could do that. Want to make a decision on that, that is fine, but what we would like to do after this meeting is go out and bid the, the project. If it's reluctant to bid it again, because it's been bid a few times in the past and we haven't followed through, and we don't want to lose credibility with the vendors. So, we would like to know that it's a real thing, and then we'll go out hopefully in either fashion that you choose. But if you don't feel comfortable making that choice tonight, we can explore both options, financing or cash purchase going forward. I've seen Finance Director Owen was here as well, if you have any questions about the issue. We, Chief included an example of what a, what a budget amendment would look like if, in fact, we made a cash purchase or did a feature that... Mayor, if I may.
Go ahead, sorry.
So, so after two weeks ago, or three weeks ago after our last meeting, I sat down with Captain Springer to just kind of get my mind around this and to understand the need. And I, and I wrote down a few notes that I just want to share with the Commission that I'm sure has been shared, but it was like it was the first time I heard them the last time. But there were things that, that mattered to me. So, the box or the back of the ambulance on the new unit could be transferred from one chassis to another. So, there's a savings in five or six years after the useful life of a new one could be used. The one that we are retiring or would retire, I believe it's 18, it does not have that box on the back of it. So, there, there's a forward-thinking kind of big-picture idea. I challenged Springer on what, like, are they going to be out of date at that point? And he was very firm or very confident in his answer, like, these, these are going to be good, and they're going to be good for some time. So, that was the, the, the one, one of the components. The overall safety of a, of a new ambulance is, is superior to, again, number 18, or I think it's Alpha 18 is the official term, in writing in the back, writing in the front, anywhere in that, that rig. Alpha 18 has 73,000 miles on it, is eight years old. In our newest one has, is two years old, and it already has 23,000 miles on it. So, even on that one, there can be some balancing load if we got a, a new one. And there's a six-year-ish useful life on these units. After kind of grinding through these thoughts, as well as thoughts in the prior, you know, tonight, I don't necessarily want to go down the alley of, of whether or not we're going to lease it or buy it. I do have an opinion on that matter right now. But, but ultimately, I, I'm at a point where I am 100% confident that now is the time to act on acquiring a new ambulance of some capacity, or in some, with some tool.
Yeah, I guess my thoughts on it was, uh, you know, when former Mayor Jacobson wanted to buy it, when Eric brought this to us, I believe it was maybe a year and a half ago or so or so, um, I wanted to make sure that, that, uh, we had the funds to do it, and also that the ambulance service is actually self-sustaining and, and, and can actually make enough money that we could do that. So, I wanted to see numbers first. I think Eric's provided us data and information that paying for the six firefighters and, and the first ambulance we purchased, you know, you know, we're still going to come out in the black. So, I just have a question. You know, is there plans to, um, like our big fire trucks, you know, is there plans to set funds aside to budget going down the road way after I'm gone that, you know, then we need to replace these? Not just a big lump sum payment? To buy or lease? Is there plans down the road? Because I don't want to come back, you know, and, and, you know, in a couple of years, we haven't budgeted correctly to need another ambulance, you know, for the one that we just bought. So, I guess that's my question for that. So, but I, I'm in agreements also with, you know, you know, we do need another ambulance now, especially seeing that we can pay for it. So, but I'm just worried about down the road, that we have a plan that will show us that we can put some money aside that when we do need a new rig, that we can, you know, we can afford to pay for it. So...
Eric, Chief, do you want to take that?
Yep. I wasn't sure who that was exactly directed to. Sorry. Um, so, from my understanding is that's what the motor vehicle pool is for, is I know the Fire Department budgeted budgets or contributes to the motor vehicle pool every year. My understanding is that's what that's for, is to put away money for purchases, because you're, you're absolutely correct. Their fire apparatus are not cheap, no matter how you, how you look at it. So, that's my understanding of the motor vehicle pool. I don't, you know, that, that's not my, I'm not seeing the motor vehicle pool funding. I just see that, I believe off the top of my head, it's like $180,000-ish that the Fire Department contributes to the motor vehicle pool every year. And like I said, I, don't quote me on that number, because it's changed, changes every year, but it's a fairly significant amount. So, but that goes into the motor vehicle pool. And then what happens to it after that, I'm not sure, because I don't per se can, you know, that's not, that's, um, Matt's budget, basically, after that.
Matt, can you comment on that?
Yeah, absolutely. So, Eric was right there. Each department contributes to the motor vehicle pool. They pay their depreciation on their equipment that they own. So, each year, we're collecting revenue in order to make those purchases later on. So, again, like Eric said, the, um, the fire apparatuses are not cheap. So, each year, they have to pay, they have to pay the depreciation off over a certain period of time, which the Commission set years ago. And I believe his, his ambulances are set over a 15-year period. So, each year, they, they pay off the $300,000 over 15 years. That's what the motor vehicle pool collects, if that makes sense.
Well, would now be a time to adjust that, because obviously 15 years isn't going to cut it for our ambulances anymore.
Too long a time.
And that's funny you ask, because the, the motor vehicle pool policy is on my desktop right now, being rewritten to be presented. So, so it'll be coming soon.
So, and, and I think maybe to, to kind of go by that. So, each ambulance would be replaced every 15 years, which would be the plan. So, one that we bought two years ago, 15 years from now would be replaced. But the plan would be, it would be a frontline ambulance for, so we'd buy one every five years, if that makes sense, if I'm not confusing you. So, we'd buy one every five years. We'd use the two as frontline, and then the oldest one, we would move to reserve for five years. And then we would rotate through, if that makes sense. And to, to give you more solid numbers, the budget, so last budget year, we paid, the Fire Department paid $188,000 into the motor vehicle pool. This year, that was increased to 267,000. That added the 70,000 for a payment on an ambulance. So, just to give you the, the numbers.
I just want to make sure we're preparing for down the road, because obviously you guys are going to, you and the guys are, are working your tails off, and you guys are busy, but you guys are going farther out now. So, you're going to be using more mileage per trip, round trip back to the station. So, I just want to make sure that we're prepared. And, and like Commissioner Watson said, 15 years is a long time with how busy you guys are. So, I just want to be prepared for down, be conservative for down the roads. We're not going to hit with another, um, two-plus-thousand-dollar bill. So, as long as there's plans, there's talking going on that we can prioritize that and have something close, you know, then I'm, I'll be okay with it. But you guys need one. I mean, you guys are busy. I mean, the numbers show it. So...
And I, I don't like that we have to constantly borrow or rent one from other town. That, we, we can't keep doing that. I think there is definitely a need for it, as, as has been shown. And I know that I, I talked to Chief Massengill this last week, and, you know, we, we definitely need it. I don't know, how do, how do we proceed then if we, looking ahead to like the next meeting, if, you know, we're not sure which way we want to go? Like, are we going to... If, you know, we're not sure which way we want to go, like, are we gonna? Can we get some of these numbers, Greg, to look at, to like really analyze and really consider as we're moving forward on, on how to proceed here?
Well, we'll have to bid it and ideally we'll bid it just one way or the other. But if you, if you want. We could bid it both ways.
Yeah, my recommendation is to buy it if we're looking for that tonight.
Yeah.
I agree. I don't understand why we would consider spending over twenty thousand dollars if we have the funding currently.
Right, yep. I'm on the same page as the previous two commissioners, I mean, it's. I mean, we got the money in fund balance, let's not spend twenty plus thousand dollars in interest when we have it, so.
Okay, well, well, we would bid it that way then and bring you back to precise numbers with budget amendment at that time.
So would you like a resolution then tonight?
Well, it's pre-meeting, so we don't want to take any action here, but I, I, I think the discussion is fine. I think Chief will correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that gives him the confidence that he, he needs to go out. Go ahead and, and get bids on.
Okay.
Yep, absolutely. That gives us a direction and, and that's the way we'll head.
Okay, well, if there's nothing else on that item, our next item is. Compost center fees. Matt is here to sound on that issue.
Thank you. I took you guys' comments from the last commission meeting and adjusted the commercial lawn care service. Fees, they now are a hundred dollar. Fee for the tag and then twenty dollars for every site entry. So every time they get material or a drop off material, they have to get a punch. And then they have to pay the twenty dollars at City Hall. So that's, that's the major difference. And then there's just a couple of notes at the bottom that we're going to offer bulk pricing as well. So really there wasn't too many big differences, but I know you guys were kind of hung up on that, that item right there. So if you guys have any other comments or concerns with this, now is the time.
I was vocal on this the last time in, in, in the edits that Matt made, I, I do appreciate and, and that's something more in line with what I was thinking. So I have, I have no reservations on, on the revised policy.
Awesome. Then I will submit a resolution on the next agenda for you guys to approve then.
Are there any other comments on that?
Sounds good to me.
Yeah. As long as we have lots of extra time here. Matt also wanted me to discuss with you. Some of our special assessment districts that we had put on hold because of COVID. And whether or not we think it might be time now to proceed with those. Matt, you want to fill in a little bit more on what we didn't do, that we're still waiting to do? To also explain the, the kind of long lead time to get one of those done.
Yeah, sure. So when Nathan was still here, he asked you guys' opinion. Whether we wanted to hold off on the special assessment for Lau Street. We were all in approval that it would probably be best to wait. The process to start a special assessment takes a couple of months. There's a lot of work on my end in the engineering department, a lot of work in the finance department. And then it has to go in front of you guys a couple of times. So it does take a couple of months to get through. I'm hopeful if you guys are ready to start moving on it, that we could start a couple of special assessments in the springtime. One being on Lau Street and then the other being on Addison Street. Both of those are in the capital budget for this year. There, there might be an additional one, Miles Drive, that's not in the capital budget, but we have funding in the capital budget if we choose to do, do so. But I'm just trying to get some direction from you, if you guys would like to move ahead with starting the special assessment process again.
Um, I've got some thoughts on that. I'm fine with Addison and Lau. Miles Drive, I thought there was some discussion, I mean, that's, that's just servicing Madison Township residents in the back there. I mean, is that something that we really need to proceed with? Or, I mean, do we only take it to a certain point? Or, I mean, that one's kind of a touchy subject as to where that goes. I mean, we've had our heads, or we've, we've had strong discussions on that matter recently. From, from residents that live in Madison, but I'm not sure that's necessarily ours. Or to benefit our citizens, I guess.
So it doesn't benefit our citizens, it does benefit a couple of businesses out there. But we do have a couple of options. We can put up block barricades and not let them use that access road anymore. I can talk with the, the manager out there and see if they're willing to split the cost of the road. Or we don't have to special assess and the city will put it pretty much back as out as. We won't put curb in, we'll just build the road up with a bigger base. But in that point, we won't special assess it. So we, we kind of have a couple of different options. I just would like some direction on what option you guys would like.
So you tell us how many businesses are there? I've driven it a couple of times recently and it, it is bad, but I, I couldn't really tell who was. What businesses were actually at that point i- in there and, and not.
So it, it does get used by Don and Urban Industries now that come off of James Street. They use that as their drive. PPG is back there, obviously Parks and Forest Street. And then there's, I think it's Roto Plastics, if I'm remembering correctly. So there is about five or six businesses out there that use it. It's all commercial.
And Matt, is, is, is that short term though, where they're going to get their entrances off of James back after the barricades are removed? Are Adrian Blissfield Railroad blocking those, those roads? And isn't there some posturing going on around that, that, that? I mean, because that's not made for heavy truck traffic through that road, is it?
On James or on Miles? Miles is not, but we would make it a Class A standard.
But should we be catering to that? Or is this a matter of just waiting this out until those, those other access points? Because I've driven it and visited those businesses and it seems like those are temporary solutions while Adrian Blissfield Railroad postures on the, the tracks.
I don't believe that's going to be a temporary barricade on the tracks. I've, I've heard that it's going to be permanent. We do not own that crossing. Adrian Blissfield has told us that they don't want people crossing there. So I, I've been told by Urban and Don that they're planning to use Miles Drive as their main access point.
Do I have these businesses reached out to us and said, hey, can we get our road fixed? Do they want the road upgraded and fixed?
I have heard from a couple of different businesses out there, yes.
And there are no residents living off of Miles Drive, correct?
No City of Adrian residents, nope.
City, correct, yeah, no city residents.
Correct.
Yeah, and what's the difference between a, I don't know what the right term is, but a resurfacing and a special assessment district? Curb, gutters, all that stuff. I mean, are we talking hundreds of thousands, fifty thousand, ten thousand? What's the difference?
We're, we're talking a couple hundred thousand. I mean, rather than, uh, so a reconstruct, my idea would be to put eighteen inches of base and probably eight inches of, inches of asphalt. If we do a resurface, we're talking about. Six inches of asphalt, mill and replace. Quite honestly, I don't think that's going to hold up. We, we only have about three or four inches of base out there currently. It's just, it was never built to the correct standard, it seems like.
Well, it was built to a standard that wasn't handling concrete trucks.
There, there you go.
And so now our hands being forced. To concrete trucks as well as trucks that are servicing. Urban, correct, which are sizable trucks.
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, Matt, have you had this discussion with those businesses?
Um, I've told them that we are looking to improve this shortly. We're looking at our options. I, I told them it's, it's going to take some time though. It's, it wasn't planned anytime. Anytime this year at all, but I think with the condition of it getting worse and worse by the day, I think it's time to probably act sooner than later. So we would have to shift some funds around. But I have talked to a couple of businesses over the, over the years, though.
But they'd be the ones who are being assessed, so I guess if they show interest. That gives us an indication what direction we should go.
Yeah.
Was Miles Drive budgeted or are you talking about, is everything about moving around funds for Miles Drive?
Correct, it was not budgeted for this year. We would, there is about three hundred thousand set aside for preventative maintenance. But that would cover the cost of Miles Drive if we decided to do that. So we would have to move that three hundred thousand from preventative maintenance over to Miles.
Do you have Miles Drive in your schedule for, for it to be redone eventually?
It is not in my five year. It was not in my five year plan.
I. Yeah.
And, and Matt, I, I, I'm shooting from the hip as to why Miles Drive is now a, a trucking road. What is the, the actual reasoning or the actual facts around why these are all of a sudden using Miles Drive?
Uh, the Blissfield or Adrian Blissfield Railroad. Told the city and the companies out there that they are no longer to use that crossing. So over the years. There was a lot of complaints about the condition of that crossing. And it, we were trying to work with Adrian Blissfield and say, hey, let's, let's fix this up. They came back to us and said, absolutely not. It turns out that that's our crossing. We don't want anyone using that crossing anymore. We're going to set up barricades. At this day, it will not, no, no, no longer be accessed. So at some point in time, someone illegally made that crossing over. I think it's James, no, not James.
James is one of them.
Is, is James one of, it's James or Oak. But now they, they wanted to use Miles Drive, which they made a driveway all the way from their company over to Miles Drive. And now they butt to it.
What percentage of the total cost of the project would the businesses be assessed approximately?
Well, so how we usually do special assessments is all the residents pay for the curb frontage. So the area in front of their business would be what they pay for. Generally, residents are usually paying about twenty-five hundred dollars for their assessment. These lots are quite sizable and quite honestly, the entire south side of Miles Drive is not really owned by much of anyone. So the city would take on probably all that portion. But I would say fifty percent of the concrete work would be paid for by, by the.
By the business.
Companies, businesses.
So it is possible to assess. Special assessment districts, the requirement is to be fortunate to benefit. So it is possible to use other methodologies besides frontage. Benefit is if you have a super large lot, lots of acreage, but very little frontage, obviously it makes no sense to assess you according to frontage. So in this case. You know, I, I would think we would look at another methodology. The fact that the other side of the road doesn't benefit. You know, makes it a one-sided road as far as the project is concerned. And I think if you could, you could conclude that all needed to be assessed to those businesses that are on the other side of the road. That may or may not fly with them, but if, if it doesn't, that's some indication that they don't really. Wanted as badly as otherwise might.
But the other side, the south side of the road, that's not owned by Sterling Estates?
It is at the end. The south side of the road backs up to springtime acres.
Right, there is a connection from the, the mobile home park. We don't have the ability to assess. That property. It's not the city.
The approximate total cost of the project is three hundred thousand, is that what I heard from you? If a Class A redo?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't see that it connects to springtime acres. I see it going only to Sterling Estates. Am I missing it?
It does not. It just backs up to the houses along springtime acres.
Got it. Okay, I see that.
Matt, I think you need to take the temperature of those businesses and that'll kind of give us our direction. And. Like Greg was saying, we, we may need to look at a different option for how. We assess those lots. But if they, if they're not willing to pay and they don't want to pay. Then we, we take a lesser option and we block off the, the access from the trailer park.
And we can certainly do that now if you guys choose to do so.
I would love to block off the access. But as Chief Massengill, is that creating a life safety issue? For the residents back there?
Oh, you know, I was just looking at that in the fire code. I, I believe there may be something in the fire code that says there needs to be two accesses. Now, who pays for it and all that? Is, is not in the fire code, but I was actually just looking that up and I haven't found it as.
How can it be? I mean, Rolling Meadows has one access. I mean, there's any number of neighborhoods with one access. Mommy, mommy court, Scott Court all have one access. How can we, how can that be right?
It is, if that is right, I've, I've actually had a lawsuit that I was involved in. Would turn down exactly that issue, but it's also regularly ignored by. And commissions and such when they approve plans like that. They don't necessarily consult the fire code and determining what they're going to approve.
I mean, why can't Madison Township support some of this? I mean, I'm telling houses or, or units back here, plenty of units back here that I, I don't know how it works. But I mean, why couldn't they invest in a road that they're going to benefit from? I mean, this is their driveway in, in, I mean, I, I don't see why, it, it, fine, play nice in the pool then. I mean, or we can put up a barricade.
That's exactly what the railroad does, right? I, I mean, up the street at. Where we have the marijuana facilities going and Jim Brown's building. They had blocked off Lawrence. Street was for exactly the same reason and. The solution was pay for a cross, proper crossing or you don't get to cross. We're kind of in the same position as the railroad with respect to Miles Drive. It's our street. Want to participate in utilizing our street. Participate in improving the street as well.
Have, have we reached out to Madison Township on this at all recently? It seems like we had this conversation a year ago, but I don't know if there was any discussion with their township trustee. Does anyone know?
I will say that Nathan said he was going to reach out to him and he said he might've had a small conversation with him, but I don't know. If it got anywhere or whatnot, so I can certainly reach out to them again.
See, I remember the gentleman that came to our meeting and he was tuning us up. And, and then we essentially told him to go to his township trustee board meeting and, and, and talk to them about it. Because it's not, I mean, they're using it. Yeah, I, I'm at a reservation for this right now. I mean, we need to, but the other two assessments, I'm, I'm okay with going forward, just me personally, but. It's a lot of money and, and like Commissioner Strayer said, you know, we need to find out those businesses are going to pony up. They're part of the assessment first, you know, make sure that's a green light. Because we do want to make sure our businesses have adequate roads and, and entrances to get in their facilities. But, you know, I always pause when, 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 you know, we've got a good, a lot of good things going on when it comes to collaboration. But again, it's like we have to focus on our citizens first, first and foremost, so.
Matt, have you noticed how much the road is deteriorating?
Matt, have you noticed how much the road has deteriorated in its, because it's been approximately 10 months or so since they closed that, that access off? Because I remember when that was happening. Like it have, and so there's been a lot more traffic now on Miles Drive, heavy traffic because of that and those businesses using that. I mean, has it deteriorated at a faster rate? Or was it just already in such bad shape that, I guess that's one of my questions. And that's something we posed to, you know, those businesses that you've already been using this, the road's getting worse. It wasn't constructed to this level. And if we're going to continue to use that, you know, and we need to reach out to those businesses and ask them. But I guess I just wondered if you've noticed it deteriorate even quicker? Because I know that traffic has picked up there because I had driven out there and saw how they were accessing it. And they had asked me to look at that when that was all happening.
Yeah, I will tell you that it has deteriorated at a much faster rate with this heavy truck traffic on it.
I have, I have a couple of questions. I don't know whether Mr. Elliott or Matt, you can, can answer or who should answer it. Mr. Elliott, you spoke about a alternative method of calculating the special assessment using not just frontage, but property size or lot size or whatever, which I think makes total sense. I guess the question is, can we special assess anything in addition to just the curbs and the concrete work? Can we make any special assessment on the actual road work?
Whatever the project is, the road improvement project, parts of that can be especially assessed benefiting property owners. The key is, you know, is it an improvement that's benefiting those property owners?
Okay. My second question, which is not politically correct, but have we any leverage on the railroad? I mean, do they need us for anything? No.
No, this is kind of how they operate anymore. You know, the most valuable thing they have is a right of way.
Just a question. Thank you.
I have one question, and that is if we didn't allow access onto Miles Drive from the trailer park, doesn't that sort of become a private road or a private drive?
The, the roads on the trailer park?
No, no, Miles Drive itself. If you don't allow access from the trailer park and the only thing there are some business, a few businesses, isn't that sort of like a private drive for those businesses?
Well, no, not in the sense that they can control access to it. It's public right of way. You know, that would be another option, but we use it as well, of course. Our parks facility is out there. And so we can't really not have it be a public road.
Well, I guess I think to move forward, Matt just needs to establish some dialogue with those businesses and see how much, how deeply they want to be into this.
And about, what do we do about Sterling Estates entrance?
Well, to me, I think it's Madison Township's issue. If there is a fire issue, then, I mean, they can either say, okay, we, we can add a, a new exit on our property, or we can work with the city of Adrian. I'm fixing up that road.
Why isn't it, why isn't it any different than the other businesses that are on there? They're using Miles Drive?
Well, it's only different because we don't have jurisdiction to specially assess them. And they would absolutely be specially assessed if they were the city.
Okay, but the driveway to the business pops through in the city of Adrian. Right? Or connects to a road in the city of Adrian.
Right. Well, to the degree those businesses are outside of the city, that's also an issue.
But the, the fact is, is that, I mean, we're looking at urban industries, Creekoff, Lonoye and Dome companies that we're providing a driveway to and we're going to get after, we're going to get special assess money out of them. I don't understand how Sterling Estates is any different or shouldn't be considered any differently, especially when you look at the number of units and the benefits they're going to get out of this road.
And we're not going to be able to get special assessment out of anybody who's outside of the city.
I, I don't know. I mean, I'm struggling with that idea. I understand it's a law and it's a, it's the way things have to happen. But it seems like a business who want to benefit their residents in the situation in some way, shape or form. And I know it sounds not very friendly, but also they're going to get a brand new road for zero cost and that's not fair.
I agree, I agree with Commissioner Watson about that. And then going back to my question that I had before about the light safety issue and, and Chief Massengill's comment that, yeah, maybe we have to have, you know, two entrances or, you know, two exits or whatever. But is that our problem? Those are Madison residents in Madison Township. Is it, to get them access twice in and out? I, I don't know. It may be our problem. We just block it off.
Yeah. So one thing to consider in blocking it off is that the other way in and out is through one of our residential subdivisions. So now you've set 100% of that Mobile Park traffic through a neighborhood that isn't.
So Springtime Acres has access to Sterling Estates?
I think that's the only other access. I'm just looking at the area.
No, they have access to Division Street. Their main entrance is off of Division Street.
Right, yeah.
Just south of Springtime Acres.
So the front half, the, the front half, but the front part of the Mobile Home Park is in the city.
Correct.
And then the backs, back half is in the township.
But are those streets ours to maintain within Sterling Estates?
No.
No, correct. So our, our load on division doesn't change?
Correct.
Correct.
I see.
Well, I will reach out to the businesses, get some feedback from them. I will also reach out to Madison Township Supervisor and see if they're willing to work with us. If they're not willing to work with us, we'll have some thinking to do, but I will get those answers for you guys.
Is there consensus on moving forward with the other two specials?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
I didn't have anything else from pre-meeting there.
All right. Welcome.
I would like, if, if, I would like to discuss something.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I, I want to, I, I need to break this down of getting back into the chambers. And specifically the commission, I'm struggling with, with this style of meeting. I know we've been doing it six months and it hasn't gotten any easier for me. So, you know, I, I would like to have that discussion among the commission of how we get the, you know, the, what would it be, nine of us with Administrator Elliott, Attorney Henigan and, and Clerk Connors at least back in, in how we get technology to bring the public in. You know, there's space in there to spread out. We can wear masks or something, but I'm having a hard time not being in the same room with you guys when trying to govern and have healthy conversations about issues.
I agree with Commissioner Watson. I think it's something we worked at. And I, I look back on the meeting that we held in person when we interviewed the administrator candidates and, and made the vote. So we had probably the same number of people you're talking about, Commissioner Watson, in, in that meeting. And I've struggled with why we can't, we can't do that. It probably could happen in the back room, but clearly we've got enough space in the main chambers to make this happen, I, I think. And we've proven to have the technology that the public can join us via Zoom or, or whatever, because they did for the meeting that, you know, that we, we hired Administrator Elliott.
Yeah, I mean, I would like to get back into the front room in some capacity or another. I mean, I, I just think it's the right place. And like I said, governing in this way is really difficult for me and I think we can do it safely.
I agree. So how do, how do we get some answers on the process and getting us back in? Because again, I'm, I'm on board with that also in a safe manner, but I've never liked these on Zoom, to be honest. I don't like meetings on Zoom. I don't, you know, but I understand why we did it, but it's time to start thinking about getting back there.
So Greg, if you don't mind, I'll just jump in first and then if you want to follow up. But I can definitely appreciate what all of you are saying and have some of the same feelings as well. I think that it's okay for us to be planning, but that this week in particular, and probably next week, are a very fluid time with regard to how things are going to be. And we're waiting to see how things shake out with regard to the recent decision on Friday from the Michigan Supreme Court regarding the governor's executive orders. We are kind of in a 21-day window where we're waiting to see where new rules come from, whether that happens from other areas of law that the governor has authority under, whether it happens from our public health department or our county officials. And though we've had some discussion about that this morning in our staff meeting and we've been getting emails all day long, I'm sure Greg's gotten emails all day as well. We don't really know what direction that's going to go. Currently, we are still faced with the 10 people inside, not more than 25 people gathered outside. But we do expect all of that to be changing over the next couple of weeks. So I think that discussion about it and brainstorming and ideas are great so that we know what direction you want to go. But I also would ask that you have just, be patient just a little longer because anything that we put in place for you right now would be subject to change on what I labeled this morning, the, the new COVID roller coaster that we've all just buckled into this morning, that as staff, we're watching to see what happens over the next few days.
How can that be? I mean, if we brought nine people into a room, but plus one candidate already wants, you know, even if we seat somebody, that'll be 10 people in a room. And, and we were in compliance with all the rules and regulations weeks ago when we appointed Greg. How's that indifferent than where we are right now?
Not any different if all you want is for all of you to be there, but you did mention that there were ways to spread out so that some of the public could be there. We're talking about how do we?
I didn't say, I said to bring the public in with technology and, and there's space for us to be in the chambers as, as a safe body.
There is a question whether, you know, and, and right now that, that is an option. So right, right before the meeting, there was a news article that came out that the Michigan Department of Public Health has stepped in now and issued what are in essence, the same orders that the governor had issued under the public health code as it relates to gatherings and masks. And then other, you know, other agencies will expect it to step up to capacity limits on businesses. The one thing that is substantially in question, however, is the ability to have virtual meetings. Ability to have virtual meetings was based on the governor through executive orders suspending the Open Meetings Act as it relates to our meeting environments. And so it is, you know, as the attorney points out, is, is very unclear what will happen to replace that authority, if anything. And if nothing replaces that authority, I mean, we're okay for, you know, this month as the order won't, pretty clear, the order won't make effect for 21 days. After that, nothing steps up to replace the virtual meeting authority, then we're going to be faced with the choice of conducting in-person meetings where the public can attend. However, we'll have a, probably have a capacity limitation on us where we can't gather more than 10 people indoors. Therefore, we can't have our meetings at all. The way it would stand right now. So without the ability to do virtual meetings, so the public can participate virtually, it's hard to see how we even do meetings. You, you just can't tell right now how this is going to shake out. Now, it's kind of, kind of too early to tell. I agree with the attorney on that. The other thing to consider when you, you think about a setting like we had for the, the administrator interviews, you know, that was great for us that were in the room, but for those that were out, the quality of what they're able to see and hear is reduced as they're not, everybody here on the checkerboard is kind of in the same place. They can see and participate equally. Those that are outside of the room in that kind of a scenario, we had, we had quite a technological undertaking to make that happen. And if Matt's still here, he can talk about some of the things they went through to make that happen. But I don't think the quality of it, what I've heard of those who were outside of the room and, and watching via Zoom was nearly as good as if you're in the Zoom meeting.
So maybe this is a time to look at upgrading our Zoom capabilities, like bringing in somebody professionally who could handle the Zooming for us so that the people who are outside do have a, a higher quality access to the meeting.
I think it would be a hardware issue or to look out.
I think with Commissioner Watson, I'm not speaking for him, but I think he's, I think his position is that we all got in a room. So I hired Greg and we had Thomas, Thomas here. So why can't we do the same? And, 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 and I agree with Commissioner Strayer. I think it's good to have like something clean and crisp. WLM did a good job, but I'm talking about even a better upgrade than that permanently. So the public can be, even when you are back to full capacity, even who knows when that's going to be, but just to have something of high quality so our residents can be able to see and hear on everything we're saying. But I, I'm at the point now, it's like, I can go to a restaurant and sit down, take the mask off. I can be in the chambers, distance safely and conduct a meeting in person because I don't like these at all, to be honest, so.
Commissioners, Matt and I actually set up the Zoom meeting for that interview and it was quite a process. Pre-pandemic, when Administrator Bird was here, we actually got a quote for a hardware setup to live stream our meetings. So we could revisit that. We obviously pushed that aside once the pandemic happened, but we could revisit that again and, and get an idea of what it would cost to do something like that.
I'm very interested in that.
Keep in mind, we got to not just livestream them, but if it's in lieu of being there in person, there has to be the ability for them to participate in them through public comment. And it has to, of course, be closed captioned and I have options for those who are visually impaired.
Yeah, I mean, we're not the only ones in this position. And so I'm sure somebody solved this issue. So I, I would love to know what's out there, what the cost is and see if there's a cost benefit to that.
I think we can put together a few ideas this week. Administrator Elliott, see what different ideas we come up with that we think could be viable. And and then bring that back to the commission possibly in a written report and see what direction maybe they're thinking of going. We have to make decisions this month regardless, so we will be figuring out which direction to go, no matter what. I think just so, like I said, giving you guys options and then you can tell us what your preference is. And we can try to fold into that whatever is coming down the pipeline to us with regard to legal direction and restrictions.
Sounds good. All right, we have a few minutes here. I now open this time for public comment. If there's any public comment, please state your name. Hearing no public comment, may I get a motion to adjourn?
Move to it.
Roberts.
Second, Strayer.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, meeting is adjourned. Then commission meeting. Aye, meeting is adjourned. Then commission meeting will begin in five minutes. Okay, guys, am I the only one or the rest of you getting unmuted and the videos coming and going? No, I'm not having any trouble. Okay. My screen keeps flashing and I hit mute and stopped video and then it comes back on where I'm muted and the video comes back on in its own. So if I need to log off and log back on, just know I'm, I don't know what.
Yeah, you might want to, because on my end, I can't unmute you. All I can do is ask you to unmute.
Probably just internet connection or something at home.
Might be.
Mayor Heath, could you please give me a call real quick before the meeting begins?
Yep.
Thank you.
Say what I want, going to go to the kitchen during the break and getting a couple bites of taco dip. I wouldn't miss that about the virtual meeting.
You could pack it to go back.
True.
Taco dip.
All right.
Fearful, that's afterwards, it's afterwards.
Yeah.
Greg, I see that you're here. Can you go ahead, please, and give the Zoom speech? Thank you.
Ma'am. Hi, everyone. I'm City Administrator Greg Elliott. It's seven o'clock. And I'd like to address a few things before Mayor Heath officially calls us to order. Much of the meeting, we asked participants other than the commissioners and staff to mute themselves to allow the commission to have their discussions and conduct their business. That will also help minimize any background noise that may be disruptive. Opportunities for public comment will be offered at different points throughout the meeting. At those times, participants can unmute themselves. They have an opportunity to address the commission on the item being discussed. The three-minute rule continues to be in effect for the public comment period at the end of the meeting. When it's time for public comment, please identify your name and address for the record prior to making your statement. Once we formally begin the meeting, the format and structure will be exactly the same as it is in person. We will work through our agenda items as usual. All commission rules and procedures remain in effect. Talked in the past about Zoom bombing. This is where a virtual meeting is interrupted by people who fill the screen with objectionable content or otherwise seek to disrupt the meeting. If this occurs during our meeting tonight, we will disconnect the meeting and restart after a few minutes. Indeed, can reconnect via the same link. We will also turn over the video of the meeting to law enforcement for investigation. We hope to conduct our meetings free of this sort of interruption, but will temporarily shut the meeting down if this happens. Our agenda will be displayed on the screen. But anyone wanting to access the full commission packet can find it at www.adriancity.com. Thank you all for participating tonight. Mayor Heath, I will turn it over to you.
I call to order the October 5th, 2020 meeting of the Adrian City Commission. If everyone will please rise for a moment of silence on the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. May I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Heath.
Present.
Commissioner Halt.
Present.
Commissioner Roberts.
Present.
Commissioner Watson.
Present.
Commissioner Strayer.
Present.
Mr. Gauss.
Present.
All commission members present.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the September 21st, 2020 regular meeting of the Adrian City Commission?
Move to approve, Watson.
Support, Roberts. I have a motion from Commissioner Watson with a second from Commissioner Roberts. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Halt.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Mr. Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Minutes approved by unanimous vote.
May I have a motion to pay the vouchers as presented?
Move, pay the vouchers as presented. Halt.
Port, Strayer.
I have a motion from Commissioner Halt with a second from Commissioner Strayer. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Mr. Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Halt.
Yes.
Vouchers approved by unanimous vote.
Ordinance 20-009 is a first reading and introduction of an ordinance to amend the City of Adrian zoning development regulations and the zoning map by deleting property located at 1610 West Beecher Street from the B2 Community Business District and RT Two Family Residential District and including the same in the I1 Light Industrial District and to include both properties in the overlay zone Marijuana Two West OZM District. Special orders. Special Order One is a public hearing to hear and consider comments regarding the proposed downtown parking special assessment district. Before I call this public hearing to order, I'm going to ask our city administrator Greg Elliott to please explain it.
This is the annual assessment that we've levied on downtown property owners since the time that we got rid of parking meters downtown. The principal amount of the assessment has remained constant over that time. It is apportioned in slightly different ways from time to time based on how those properties are used. And our assessor, Kristen Brown, is here as well, if there are further questions on the methodology.
Thank you. I now open this public hearing to hear and consider comments of the proposed downtown parking special assessment district. At this time, if there is any public comment, you may begin. I am hearing no comments, so I declare this public hearing closed. Moving on to resolutions. Resolution R20-179 is from assessing. It is a resolution to approve the creation of a special assessment district in the downtown development district. May I have a motion to approve the resolution?
Will we adopt the resolution? Halt. Support, Watson.
Are there any public comments?
Yeah, Ken Tolkars, 110 South Locust. I don't feel that the City of Adrian consistently applies special assessment districts when it's residential properties such as Vine Street. You guys take the cost and it looks like you apply a third of the cost to create the special assessment district. When it comes to the DDA, you guys put money that's unknown and then you apply it to the district. Mr. Elliott had referenced past years. And in past years, you have never had a contingency amount in this. And this year, you have a contingency amount of $60,000. So what, you've got a total of $210,000 for parking, but then on top of that, $210,000, almost 35%. You guys don't know if you're going to go over budget. Once again, I don't think that the city is fairly applying the special assessment districts. If the city is going to want flowers, if they're going to want hay bales, I think that the businesses should pay for it and the city can kick in. But I don't think the $60,000 is enough to pick up all of those costs. Thank you.
Are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Halt with a second from Commissioner Watson. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Mr. Gauss.
No.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Halt.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by a five yes, one no vote.
Resolution R20-1180 is from Parks and Engineering Services. It is a resolution to award a bid for the purchase of an inspection truck. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution? Move to adopt the resolution, Roberts.
Support, Halt.
Are there any public comments?
Ken Tolkars, 110 South Locust. I still believe that we do not know all of the impact of COVID-19. And at this point in time, I think that we should defer any capital purchases until we've got a clear picture of what the future looks like. As you all know, I worked for Adrian Schools. 10 years we went without purchasing vehicles. It seems like every couple of months, the city is purchasing new vehicles. And I don't know why we can't use them till they're 200,000 miles on there. Thank you.
Are there any commissioner comments?
Mayor, if I may.
Go ahead, Commissioner Watson.
Just one thing, or two things, actually. On the Bell Ford of Adrian and LaFontaine of Lansing, what is the local purchasing, the variance that's available there? And does this meet it if Bell Ford has submitted the, and met all the requirements of the bid?
Matt, do you want to comment on that?
Yeah, sure. So I actually looked at the local preference policy and they do not fall within the threshold. They were, it did shave a couple hundred dollars off, but it did not shave enough off to classify as the low bid. Also, the Dodge presented by LaFontaine is a four by four and the other vehicles were a four by two. So we should be getting a better, more bang for our buck in this purchase.
Thank you.
I have a motion from Commissioner Roberts with a second from Commissioner Halt. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Halt.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Watson.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R20-181 is from Community Development. It is a resolution to set a public hearing for October 19th, 2020 to hear and consider comments for an industrial facilities exemption certificate for a plane wave. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution, Gauss.
Support, Strayer.
Are there any public comments? Are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Gauss with a second from Commissioner Strayer. Roll call, please.
Mr. Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Halt.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R20-182 is from the Utilities Department. It is a resolution to authorize the purchase of one crane truck for the wastewater treatment plant. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution, Watson.
Support, Gauss.
Are there any public comments? Are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Watson with a second from Commissioner Gauss. Roll call, please.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Halt.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Mr. Gauss. Mr. Gauss?
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R twenty dash one eighty-three is from the fire department. It is a resolution to authorize the acceptance of the assistance to firefighters grant to extend the current vehicle exhaust collection system to the system base not covered by the current system. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution, help?
Support Strayer.
Are there any public comments? Are there any commissioner comments?
Madam Mayor, I just have a question. What is the dollar amount of the grant that's being accepted?
The total amount is twenty-five thousand. Our portion is ten percent of that. So a little over twenty-two hundred, I believe.
Thank you.
I have a motion from Commissioner Halt with a second from Commissioner Strayer. Roll call, please.
Mr. Halt?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer?
Yes.
Mr. Gauss?
Yes.
Mayor Heath?
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R twenty dash one eighty-four is from the city clerk. It is a resolution to approve a new medical marijuana facility permit for TC M I A G LLC. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution. Strayer.
Support Roberts.
Are there any public comments? Are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Strayer with a second from Commissioner Roberts. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Mr. Strayer?
Yes.
Mr. Gauss?
Yes.
Mayor Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Halt?
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R twenty dash one eighty-five is from the city commission. It is a resolution to initiate an amendment to the Adrian zoning ordinance to allow the keeping of chickens. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution, Watson.
Support help.
Are there any public comments? Are there any commissioner comments?
Oh, go ahead.
When we first have been talking about this, there was no mention of having it at preschools or schools. I would respectfully request to have that part of the language in the resolution removed before we send it to the planning commission. I can give you my reasons too, in case you're curious. As someone who's had chickens her entire life on our farm. What happens when there's snow days? What happens when there's spring break or over holidays? Do those, the people that have to take them home have to go through the zoning and getting the applications and all of that? Where they have to do the, and make sure that they have the coops in the backyard correctly. It's, chickens aren't really meant to be moved from place to place.
I'm comfortable ending my motion to exclude any mention of preschool, primary, or secondary schools. Mayor, if I may?
Go ahead.
I picked this up and I was skeptical at first as to why we would want chickens in our city. I did my homework. I made my visits. We were provided with a lot of information in favor of them and it opened my eyes. And then I did some more research on it with cities and codes around the area. You know, and just to remind everybody, not just my fellow commissioners, but all people tuned in tonight. This, this resolution is simply to start the process through the planning commission. And it does not change our ordinance in any way, shape, or form. So, so with that, we have been presented with a pretty compelling case that, that our city residents would benefit from, from a resolution to go down this road. I was changed from a skeptic to a bit of a believer at this point in time. And I think that it's the right thing to do is to send this into the planning commission for their review, as well as for the public's opportunity to discuss this. And reminding everybody that we've been presented with facts. And we've also been presented with a lot of skepticism that's based on hearsay and opinion. And that, that is what I have to say about this matter.
I will say that I have gone back and forth a lot since this discussion began many months ago. We brought it to a pre-meeting quite a long time ago. Just revisited it recently and I was very torn. I would say one, one day I leaned one way, one day I leaned the other. But what I think really solidified it for me was at our last meeting when, and then, you know, seeing the actual verbiage and the document and knowing that it's not going to be tenants that are gonna be able to, you know, have chickens. There's gonna be all these restrictions. The coop has to be, you know, a certain way. There has to be a certain amount of room inside and outside for each chicken. And, you know, I know that's the planning commission's, you know, job to, you know, to, to work on this. But I felt a lot more comfortable after, after seeing that. I know there's been, I've had several people call me that are very concerned about property value decreasing because of that. I, I just really still struggle with seeing that at this point. And I, I have to, I have to say, we are an agricultural county. We are, we are known for that throughout the state, throughout the Midwest. And our Lenawee County Fair is like the state's oldest running fair. You know, four H has been a very big part here. And it's just hard to deny those facts when you look at that and, and how strong of a role that agriculture has played in our community.
I guess I can piggyback on the mayor's comments. I'm with her. I'm, I'm, I don't care about this issue. So when you don't care about an issue, you look at the data. So I don't base decisions like this on issues I'm not really passionate about, based on speculation. The data's been presented and I think it's something that the planning commission should explore. Again, I'm, I'm not gonna have chickens personally, but the data shows that the, from the enforcement standpoint and the violations that they're minimal at best. So again, issues I don't really have a big, you know, a lot of passion for. I don't base it based on speculation. I look at the numbers. And, and the numbers could turn be the other way when I was leading initially when this was brought to the table, so. I appreciate Commissioner Halt using the word enforcement because that's the concern I've got. So well-written document, a lot of good provisions within it. My concern is I'd like to know specifically what the vigorous enforcement program is going to be for making sure the rules get followed. We've got great rules written here, but unfortunately, we don't have a great history of enforcing our ordinances. There are chickens in the city right now in violation of city ordinances. But we've done absolutely nothing about it. And, you know, I would expect if we pass this ordinance eventually that those chicken owners would have to come into compliance. But once again, who's gonna make that happen? How vigorous is our, our enforcement efforts going to be? You know, in these other cities, you know, I don't know whether they would have more violations or citations if they had more vigorous enforcement actions. I'm just not sure, but that's what I'm concerned about. You know, if you, everybody follows the rules, that's a great thing. But if people don't follow the rules and we're not willing to enforce them, it's not a great thing.
In my opinion, the rule breakers are gonna be here regardless of we have a ordinance or a resolution or not. We just bought a truck for a new inspection department or for, for the inspection department. And we've got job interviews queued up for those guys. I think we've done everything, not only for this ordinance and resolution, but that we've talked about before about following, you're right, Gordon. We got great resolutions and things out there and they're worthless if they're not enforced. Hopefully, we've teed ourselves up for them to be a success and that these do have some teeth to them.
Thank you.
And just, I think as Commissioner Watson stated, we are not voting on amending the ordinance tonight. All we're doing is asking the planning commission to review this into a public hearing. So if you have any questions, you can go to the planning commission when it's on their agenda. Then they will send it back to us for an official vote. Correct, Mr. Elliott?
That's correct. I'll make a recommendation and send it back to you to vote.
So I have a motion from Commissioner Watson with a second from Commissioner Halt. Roll call, please.
Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Mr. Strayer?
Yes.
Mr. Gauss?
Yes.
Mayor Heath?
Yes.
Commissioner Halt?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Resolution adopted, but with the option, or to exclude any mention of preschool or schools from the resolution was approved by unanimous vote.
Yes.
Now it is time for public comment. Just to reiterate, there's a three-minute time limit. And for the record, please state your name and address.
Ken Tocars, one ten South Locust. I'm here to talk about the stewardship of public records. At every city council meeting, you guys go through a roll call vote and you, the commissioners are announced and you record their votes. And to me, that's gotta be something that's really important because you spend so much time doing it and you do it for every record. My concern is what happens after you guys approve something? And I'm gonna provide two examples. Recently, I wanted to see the resumes for the three city commissioner candidates. And when you go on the city's website, that information wasn't there. And I had to call and, and ask for that information. So when you guys approve something, it concerns me that an employee can just go through and haphazardly delete something or not put the correct information on the website. Another instance was the agendas. You guys post an agenda and it's not my duty to look at the agenda every ten or fifteen minutes to see if the city of Adrian makes a change. I believe it was the contract for the city administrator. That contract was not on the original agenda. I looked at the agenda when it came out and basically, okay, it wasn't on there. Then the day of the meeting, the agenda was on there. So I think there's some problems with the stewardship and you guys are charged with keeping those records. So I'm asking that you possibly have some type of inquiry or some type of an audit to go through the city records to make sure that the correct city records are up to date on the city of Adrian website. The only other ask that I have that you consider is with businesses like the Spotted Cow and Kentucky Fried Chicken where there is lines out in the middle of the road. I feel that the city should have some type of an ordinance that when it gets to that point, you just can't go in there because what's happening is you get cars that are going in the direction and then, then they swerve into the other lane and then you got cars in the left-hand lane. And I think it's an accident waiting to happen. I think if the line gets too long where you have to wait into the main road that the car, it's just, hey, it's too busy and you gotta come back in ten minutes. You can't wait there. And I would like to see the city start enforcing that. Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Gretchen Driscoll and I live at three twenty North Ann Arbor Street here in Saline, Michigan. And I just wanted to, first of all, say good evening and thank you for all the great work you're doing. I've been in front of this commission in the past when I ran last cycle. I'm sorry that I'm not able to be there in person, but I know you're not there in person either. So we have challenging times right now. I just wanted to introduce my, first of all, say congratulations to all of you for serving your community. It's a great privilege and honor. And I did have the good fortune to serve in Saline for six years on city council and fourteen as mayor. And also had the opportunity to serve with some of your previous mayors. Did a lot of work at the state and federal level advocating for city issues and making sure that we got investments in our communities across the state and also supporting small businesses. I just was listening to your chicken ordinance. We in Saline had, we have a chicken ordinance and actually my neighbor, I live right on North Ann Arbor Street, pretty busy road. But my neighbor, two doors, that right close to downtown, about two blocks. My neighbor, three doors down, had chickens for a while and it was really not very intrusive. As a matter of fact, one time I was on the phone and looked out in my backyard and there's a couple chickens. I didn't even know where they came from because I didn't even know we had them. So obviously enforcement is a huge-ish part of your opening up to having chickens. But I would say that I think it could be something really good for a lot of your community members. And I see that you have a really great process for that. I just, you know, I'm running for office because I believe that we need somebody that really understands what's happening to our communities and our schools and the people in the seventh congressional district. I know we are going to go through some additional challenges around, as was mentioned earlier, around our budgets. I spoke with some of you earlier this year about some tools that are out there. It's really, really important time that we are able to provide public services, public safety, a strong infrastructure and good staffing, not only here in your community, but in our schools. And make sure we have quality communities because my goal as a representative of the people is to continue to support entrepreneurship and small businesses and get more people to come back to Michigan. We've had a lot of people leave the state in the last recession. And I know that when we make the right investments in things like rural broadband and clean water and good schools, we're gonna continue to see our cities thrive and our communities thrive. So I just want to say good evening tonight. I'm hoping to be on your next call and your next meeting. And just want to say thank you for your service. It's a great privilege to have that opportunity and I miss it. Thank you.
My name is Andrea Bernard and I live at thirteen forty West Maple Avenue. I'm announcing the meeting that the NAACP will be having on September the twenty-second. And it starts at six thirty PM Eastern Standard Time. It's a Zoom webinar with the candidates. And also it would be Gretchen Drisco and Tim Wahlberg. Those are the two that are going to be having the meeting with us. So if you would like to be a part of that, I will send that again out to the mayor. And so the city commissioners and HRC commissioners can be a part of that. We're not going anything particular, but we're just going to participate. Thank you.
Joel Hendricks. I'm a board member for Share the Warmth, four twenty-seven West Monme Street, Adrian, Michigan. So the board of directors met last week and we talked about the recent city ordinance that was passed. And we wanted to just make a short little statement about that. First off, let me say we're not in favor of the ordinance. I don't think, there's probably a lot of people out there who love the ordinance. However, having said that, we understand where the commission's coming from. We too have been presented with difficult situations that only have two options, bad and worse. During the spring, we had to make a decision. During the spring, we had to make a decision for our guests. Because of COVID, we wanted to stay open 24/7. And what was going to happen is we were going to allow people to stay, but if they left, they couldn't come back. They were permanently gone. That is a tough decision and it, it would be easy on the outside to look at that and think that, you know, that was an uncompassionate way to go about it. We had to look at the bigger picture. We had to do what was best to protect the guests. Unfortunately, the commission, they had a similar decision to make. What they did, what you all did, has been viewed as incompassionate. But you did what you had to do to protect the parks and all the other users of the park. Unfortunately, destructive behavior got out of control with the parks and the actions of some people forced the city to respond. Three years ago, I personally stood in front of this commission and asked for help to open a homeless shelter. The public support that came out of that meeting was nothing short of amazing. The city was with us every step of the way. We had several meetings with the fire department and the building departments just to make sure that we thought of everything. And we would not be here if it were not for the city and the city officials and the city commission. So we just want to say thank you. You stood by us even when it was not popular and we were going to stand by you as well. I personally know most of you and I can promise anyone listening tonight that none of these people are heartless. They all have a thankless job to do and they, they're doing it to the best of their abilities. I can promise you that. One more note. This ordinance has really galvanized the feeling in the community for the homeless and that's invigorating. That's great. I would encourage people to focus that, to use it. We need help down at the shelter. If you want to make a difference, please come down and volunteer, donate. We're always looking for food, we're looking for volunteers and money. So we, we could always use the help. I just wanted to add that a little bit in there. Thank you.
Um, hello, I would like to make comment.
Go ahead, Joaquin.
All right, I'm Joaquin Ramos, of course. I live on South Wind, you've all heard from me numerous times. But I would just like to voice a complaint of it's just barely after 7:30. It's already dark. Even if I wanted to go to the park, I can't. I get that we need to do some precautions for a bit 7:30. They used to close at 11:00. It just feels a bit ridiculous that this much time's just been ripped away from being able to be at parks. Thank you.
Hearing no more public comments, I'm going to move on. Are there any commissioner comments? I would just like to let everyone know that next Tuesday, October 13th at 6:00 PM, we will be conducting our interviews for the city commission spot that is now, that is open. Those applications will close this Thursday, October 8th and we will be conducting those interviews. We will be putting that out on our website that you can view them and participate in that special meeting. But that will be on Tuesday, October 13th at 6:00 PM. Hearing no other commissioner comments, may I get a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
Support, Watson.
I have a motion from Commissioner Halt with a second from Commissioner Watson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.